Good evening and welcome to the January 11th, 2016, meeting of the Florissant City Council. As we begin this evening, I would ask you to rise and join the council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Schmidt?
Here.
Syam? Lee?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Egan?
Here.
Kaputa?
Here.
Shildroth?
Here.
Henke?
Here.
Pagano?
Here.
Let the record reflect that a quorum is present. Before we begin this evening, I would like to ask the people in the audience and those who are watching this live at home, take a moment and have a moment of silence or reflection for Brian Fletcher. As Mayor Schneider had the duty of informing me yesterday, Brian Fletcher, city councilman in the city of Ferguson, passed away yesterday very unexpectedly. Mr. Fletcher had served previously as the mayor of Ferguson, has strong relations to many of our friends in the Ferguson city government, and was probably the person best responsible for the "I heart Ferguson" campaign. North County and Ferguson has lost a dear friend yesterday, so I ask that you just take a second and join the council and the mayor and I in remembering Mr. Brian Fletcher. Thank you. Item number three. Mr. Syam makes a motion to approve the meeting minutes and the executive meeting minutes from the December 14th, 2015 meeting. That motion is seconded by Mr. Henke. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Let the record reflect that the meeting minutes have been approved. Item number four, hearing from citizens. If you would like to make comment to the council, now is the time for you to do so. I would ask that you complete a speaker's card that is located on the table next to the chamber's entrance and provide that to Mr. Hassel. The city attorney will pass it my way. This is not a question and answer session. If you want a direct answer to your question, your concern, you can see myself or one of the council people or the mayor after the meeting. The first person I have is Martina Johnson. And Ms. Johnson, we discussed that you have comments on two ordinances that are on the agenda for this evening. Do you want to make any preliminary comments to the council before we get to those? Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, communications. Madam Clerk, would you be so kind as to read the communications?
Email dated January 7th, 2016, from Kevin O'Donnell regarding the newly-created business liaison police officer position.
Thank you. Item number six, public hearings. We will reopen public hearing 15-11-27. I have been in contact with the petitioner, who has informed me that he is intending on withdrawing his plan and will approach the council and the city at a later date with his revised plan. Prior to closing the public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who had come this evening to speak regarding this public hearing? Seeing none, I would make a motion to close the public hearing. That is seconded by Mr. Shildroth. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The hearing shall be closed. Old business. Bill's for second reading. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to reconsider my vote on bill number 9144, which was ordinance 8190.
There's a motion on the floor for reconsideration of Mr. Lee's vote that is seconded by Mr. Jones. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. The bill is now back on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be moving to amend section one of bill 9144 to substitute the title of the proposition as Proposition B. As the council knows, we passed this before the first of the year, and Proposition B is going to be the designation that's going to be used by the other municipalities, so I would like to amend that so that it would be in compliance and will be in the same Proposition B.
Mr. Lee has made a motion to amend. That is seconded by Ms. Pagano. Is there any discussion on the amendment? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
And then, Mr. President, I'll call for a final reading then.
Mr. Lee has now made a call for a final vote on the bill. That is seconded by Mr. Shildroth. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the amended bill is ordinance 8190. Roll call? Okay, roll call vote.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Syam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Let the record reflect. All ayes, and it is now ordinance 8190. Item eight, new business. There is none. Item nine, board appointments. Mr. Shildroth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to reappoint Terry Ryder, 415 St. Christina, to the Citizens Participation Committee.
Mr. Schmidt makes that motion that is seconded by Mr. Syam. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The appointment shall be made. Ms. Pagano.
Yes, I would like to reappoint Peggy Dusel to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Mr. Shildroth moves for approval, seconded by Mr. Henke. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The appointment shall be made. Your honor?
Mr. President, I'd like to appoint the following individuals to the Emergency Management Commission: Eric Thomas from Ward 1 and Antonia Gist from Ward 2.
Mr. Kaputa makes motion for those appointments. That is seconded by Mr. Lee. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The appointment shall be made. You're welcome. Item number 10, request. From Ward 9, transfer of special use permit number 8116 from Sheng Hui Dong, DBA number one Chinese restaurant, to Yang Enterprises, Inc., DBA number one Chinese restaurant for the operation of a restaurant located at 2738 North Highway 67. Mr. Syam makes recommendation for that request. That is seconded by Ms. Pagano. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the request shall be granted. Item number 11, bills for first reading. Bill number 9133.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 6816 from Sheng Qiyong, DBA number one Chinese restaurant, to Yang Enterprises, DBA number one Chinese restaurant for the operation of a restaurant located at 2738 North Highway 67.
Bill number 9134.
Ordinance appointing nine registered voters to a redistricting commission.
Bill number 9135.
Ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the city of Florissant, Missouri for their approval at the general municipal election to be held in the city on the 5th of April, 2016, the proposition to authorize the city to increase the fee for rental license to $50 per unit.
Ms. Pagano makes a motion for a second reading. That is seconded by Mr. Jones. Is there any discussion? All in favor of a second reading? Aye. Opposed? Please read the bill for a second time.
Ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the city of Florissant, Missouri for their approval at the general municipal election to be held in the city on the 5th of April, 2016, the proposition to authorize the city to increase the fee for rental license to $50 per unit.
Mr. Syam makes a motion for a third reading. That is seconded by Mr. Lee. Is there any discussion? All favor of a third reading? Roll call? Roll call vote, please. Here we go.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Syam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Please read the bill a third time.
Ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the city of Florissant, Missouri, their approval at the general municipal election to be held in the city on the 5th of April, the 5th day of April, 2016, a proposition to authorize the city to increase the fee for rental license to $50 per unit.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the studio and the audience that would like to make comment? I don't know where I'm at on that. Good evening, sir. If you'd be so kind as to state your name and home address for the record, I would be appreciated.
Absolutely, John.
I'd be appreciated.
Inglemeyer, 1281 Graham Road.
Go right ahead, sir.
On this particular bill, it's going to emergency reading, and you've already completed that. The other night, you had a special work session. I didn't see it on the agenda on the Internet, but I was informed of the meeting, and I attended. I was the only citizen at that meeting, and yet the discussion occurred about this bill and about the fee increase. I've always been objecting to the $15 fee. I think it was too low, but now it's going up 20 times that. I'm going to be obligated to pay $300 as a landlord for my tenants of my properties that I have in the city of Florissant, during which I wish I could sit down as you are, but I'll stand. As the discussion went around the table, there was a discussion about tenants causing property values to be diminishing within the city of Florissant, and I heard that not just from one member of the council, but several. I found it to be very embarrassing, being a landlord. I found it to be very upsetting, while we're profiling an individual as a tenant, and a tenant being an issue within the city of Florissant, profiling an individual who in fact may not have the money or the facilities or the situation where he can afford or she can afford a home. And I agree. I think it's a terrible travesty. We've gone through the bubble of bad mortgages, and yet the other hand is that my tenants have been there for a very long time, and I'm thrilled to death to have them to this day. I went around and I pulled each one of your real estate taxes off of the Internet to see what your property values were. Some went up, some went down, some went flatline. I pulled up my own and the comparable sales around my own home. I could see values of $39,000, $24,000, $18,500, $22,600, $25,000, $42,000, $32,000, $10,000, $34. That's one page of many. I can't blame that on the rental property. I can't blame it on the tenant. I blame it, part of this, on the city. When we had the Proposition S and said "safe cities," and I talked about that, about being deceptive, it wasn't "safe cities," it was "save the cities," but we gave you the illusion that we have a problem, that we have a crime problem. And once again, what's coming up is the crime-free neighborhoods, and again, crime-free gives us an indication that we are in trouble in terms of crime and issues, and yet the other hand of it is, is that the city council, the city, St. Louis County Council, passed a resolution about reporting of crimes. I see some of this was a resistance on this behalf of the city, and I find objection to that. I like disclosure. I like to know what's going on within my own city. As I turn the pages, is that one of the things that I pulled up today was Rutgers. One of them was the Washington Post, owning versus renting a home, and it says flexibility, reasons to rent, flexibility, career uncertainty, income uncertainty, bad credit, no maintenance expenses, and utilities. There was nothing like that discussed the other night. I find that, and once again, objectionable. And I applaud the commission in terms of doing their work and due diligence, but there was never any time for a citizen to participate within that commission, that subcommittee, who is a landlord, to my knowledge, or a tenant. I pulled up another document. It says the advantages of ownership, and the advantages of ownership talks about paying a mortgage off and building equity, but it also says disadvantages of ownership, and it says here that you're locked in on a mortgage. Homeowners are responsible for repairs. Property taxes are your responsibility, not at all cost, baked into the home price tag regarding repairs and issues. Another document I pulled up, that a question virtually all adults ask themselves at one point or another, and especially around the time of the year, as some people consider their goals and plans for the year ahead. So before you answer the question, here are some questions you should ask yourself first. Being, their homes being a store of wealth, something to liquidate in retirement and downcasing. It says here, sadly, also cautions prospective homeowners to think about is the health of their city. I sent an email out yesterday concerning the budget and how skewed it is on the first month of our new budget year. Not one person responded to it, which indicates to me I am right on the right path. I find it strongly objectionable that apparently the fiduciary responsibility doesn't lie within my counsel to this administration. There's no responsibility to the citizens of this community, and you've totally ignored that. It says here, health of the city. Most experts suggest it's safer to stick with renting. This is an article out of the Internet. Era, era, ups and downs, home prices return to sanity. Talks about the 2008 meltdown with mortgages and the people going into mortgages underwater. I pulled up another document, Chapter 6, Renting Residential Property. Here's a whole document on it. I don't see anything else. I should have had everybody get a copy of this, but you have to pass it tonight because it has to go on the ballot by the 19th of January for certification. This could also wait till August. We're going to have primaries here. We're going to have a general election in November. The hurry and the push in this doesn't make sense to me. I'm not unwilling to pay for services to this city. I like the license aspect. $15 is too little. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, it's too little, but $300, I think, is totally, totally wrong. Again, I went over the property values. I did research about the properties around my neighborhood, and I pulled that up, and it's like, are you kidding me? We blame the tenants? People are scared. When you hear the word "safe cities," what's the first thing that comes to your mind? It's fear. What are we fearing? And years ago, many years ago, I talked about dumping and running. People within this city here have homes. They've been here long time residents. Dad dies, mom's left alone, the kids move out, they move to St. Charles County. The kids don't want the house here because of the issues and the, let's call it the element, because we don't want to talk about that, and they say to their mom, "Mom, get out of there, get out of there." So they dump and run, and this is what's happening. It's not the tenant, it's not the landlord, it's perspective of the city to other people that it's unsafe or it's not safe at all. A lady just moved out in Ward 5, and she moved to St. Charles because her children advocated that, and she's so thrilled to death to be out there, even though we have the amenities such as the senior center and the flirt bus and a senior commission. So I come tonight under protests, and I think you're walking down the wrong path. There's no immediacy, other than the fact of putting it on the agenda, and I can understand the importance of putting it on the agenda, but not, not this time. I got August, I got November, what's the rush? The revenue generated by this $350,000 increase, how are we spending that? You know, I have real issues. This was not discussed at the budget session. I know that the renters commission was started, or the landlord issues commission was started, but I never thought $350,000, and how are we going to spend that money? This is absolutely ludicrous in my point and very invalid. I think we're profiling. I don't know what the issue is, because now we're going to start annualizing our tenants, and yes, I want good tenants. I want those screened to a point of not violating the law in terms of the Justice Department. We saw what happened in some of the other communities. I think we're walking down a bad path. Thank you.
Ms. Pagano.
Yes, Mr. Inglemeyer, never once do I believe in this whole session, didn't anyone ever condemn a renter. I have no trouble with renters. Do I have trouble with some landlords? Yes, I do. When I look at the cost of what it costs us to do the bookwork, the paperwork, and everything, we are up to over $100 a house. Right now, for years since 1997, you've gotten off pretty good at $15 for six pieces of property. Now I'm asking you for $300 for that six pieces of property, being that it's costing us at least $100 per unit in order to do everything for that. That, so $50 is not even covering our cost. $19.97 is what I'm saying. It comes down to $4.17 per month, per home that you have. That's what I'm getting at. Never have I ever condemned a renter. So that, and this is not something I've gone into lightly. I have been working on this for over six months. In 2013, I know it was brought up to the council in a work session, which you do attend, so if you want to go back to 2013, it was brought up, and the ball sort of dropped, and then I picked it back up because I see the necessity. So $4.17 per month on the property that I don't know what you're getting for rent, but I'm sure it's not going to kill you a month to help this city get back some of the money that they are spending.
Thank you, Ms. Pagano. Mr. Jones?
John, we tried to do...
Mr. Jones, you have the floor.
John, we tried to do our homework on this. We're not perfect up here, but we are looking into some things that probably needed to be looked into a long time ago, John. The $4, what we looked at a month, I don't think that's asking too much. It is going to go to the vote of the people. Let the voters speak, John. I mean, I think that's the right thing to do. That's what the city's required to do, and that's what we are going to do. But we are trying to make some moves in this city to try to get it cleaned up, John. No matter if it's the landlord, the renter, or whoever you're saying that we're pointing at, something needs to be done, and we are jumping on it. We have subsidized this for years now. We've sat down and looked at all the surrounding municipalities, what they're at. There's some higher, there's some medium, but there's nobody lower than Florissant, which is ridiculous. This stuff should have been done a long time ago. We are grabbing it, and we are moving forward with this. As I said, subsidizing, John, every one of these taxpaying citizens right now is paying for these things to be done. I think it's enough. It's rode on these voters' back long enough that the people responsible need to step up, and I, like I said, let the voters, let them decide, John. I mean, it's the right thing to do, and that's what we're doing. But we have sat down, I bounce everything I do off everybody, John. I grab a renter, I grab a homeowner. Most of the times, I don't even go in directly and say, "Look, this is what we're trying to do." I go in and get their opinions, but there's a lot that we did look into. Is there ever going to be a perfect one? No, there's not, John, but we are trying to do things right now with this city. I do value some of your opinions, John. That's why I'm speaking to you right now, but I think on this one, I think you're wrong. I think it's great that you are a landlord, so I can get your opinion off it, because I'll listen to any landlord, but the only thing is, you're not seeing the problems that we're seeing. I am in my car seven days a week in my ward, driving around, looking at these problems, hearing from these longtime homeowners that said, "Timmy, enough is enough. Do something." So we have sat down as a commission and worked very hard to come up with something. We brought it to this council. The council is in full agreement with us. The city management is, the mayor is, and now we're going to bring it to the voters and let them speak. Thanks for your time, John.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like... Mr. Inglemeyer, I'd ask that you sit down, please. Mr. Inglemeyer, I'd ask that you sit down, please. Mr. Inglemeyer, I gave you the opportunity to say your piece. I would ask now that you sit down, please. Mr. Inglemeyer, I would ask that you sit down, please. I gave you the opportunity to make a comment, and you've made your comment. I'm asking you now to sit down. I'm not giving you that opportunity. You've had your opportunity to make a comment. I gave you... Mr. Inglemeyer, no one in this city has ever had, no one in this city has had the exact, has had as much courtesy given to you. No one in the budget process, in any other process that we go to, you not only do you get exactly what everyone gets, you always demand more, and I've given you the opportunity at work sessions to make your comments. You've made your comment this evening, which we're supposed to allow you, and I'm glad you got up here and made the comment, but now it's time to sit down, please. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like? I've got Ms. Jones first, sir. All right. Ma'am, if you'd be so kind as to state your name and address for the record, I appreciate it.
Yeah, my name is Martina Johnson, and I'm the Government Affairs Director at St. Louis Association of Realtors.
And we need an address, please.
7334 Pershing Avenue, University City, Missouri.
Thank you. You may proceed, ma'am.
So I'm here to address the rental licensing bill today. You know, I did see this for the first time today, as it is the first reading, and wanted to address the council. We are concerned about the exorbitant increase in fees from $15 per license to $50 per unit per license. This is, like the gentleman said before me, a 20, you know, 20 times the increase. We are, you know, concerned, and we're worried that this cost is actually going to go to the tenants in Florissant. So 24% of renters in the St. Louis area spend at least half their income on housing, and that's from the National Housing Conference Center for Housing Policy Study in 2014. That's, you know, it's being housing cost burden is spending 30% or more of your income on housing. of your income on housing costs. And by increasing the fees on rental property owners, these fees are just going to get passed down to your tenants. And renting is the most affordable segment of our, you know, housing stock population and we, as an association, would want to support the availability of affordable housing in your community. So, I mean, I did have, am I allowed to address the council? I was wondering where you guys had the four dollars a month and the hundred dollars, um, I'm sorry, it was in your work session.
We looked at our fees, we looked at those of other cities. Four dollars and seventeen cents a month per unit will be charged. That equals fifty dollars a year.
Is that for the rent, the multifamily?
Fifty dollars per unit. No matter how many units you have, if you have one unit, if you have five hundred units, it will be fifty dollars per year on that unit. Again, breaking that down, four dollars seventeen cents a month. Now you, as the landlord or the homeowner, you can charge them rent for whatever you do. I'm not coming in telling you, you know, "Boy, you're too high because they're using thirty percent of their income," am I? I'm saying for our cost, in order to do that, it is costing us over a hundred dollars per unit. Since nineteen ninety-seven, we have never raised the fee.
Is the hundred dollars, I mean, I'm just, has the processing cost gone up since collecting everyone's addresses and the fee-
There is no other fee. It's a fifteen dollar for the five hundred units. It's not covering our cost. It's costing us a hundred dollars per unit. We're only charging you fifty. Can you tell me what you pay in Ferguson?
I don't live in Ferguson.
Can you tell me what the real estate, what they're charging? Because I've done the research and as Mr. Jones has said, it's, it's, we are, right now, we're doing it for free.
No, I mean, I'm about to end up arguing.
But I'm just saying the fifty dollars is in line with every other city.
I'm trying to just figure out where, wha- what costs the money, that the collecting of the data?
All our clericals, our inspections, all the paperwork that goes with doing that would cost a hundred dollars per unit. And we are only charging you fifty dollars per unit.
And it's per unit, whether it's a single family dwelling or a multi, part of a multifamily dwelling?
Per unit.
Okay. I mean, I, like I said, I've read this bill for the first time today. I'm sorry, I'm not more prepared. I didn't realize you guys were going up for final passage within one county council meeting, or city council meeting. Um, but my organization has a history of, you know, looking out for ordinances like this and we would encourage you to please wait, please consult with our organization. We represent seventy-five hundred Realtors in the St. Louis area and this is, it, this is an exorbitant increase.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Yes, ma'am. Also wanted to make, you asked a question about the fees, okay? I'm sure you're familiar with the Hancock Amendment in the state of Missouri. We couldn't increase the fee from fifteen dollars to, uh, over the period of years without taking it to the voters, so we've held off all these years. And now we're, and now we're taking it to the voters and, and they're going to be the ones that decide. You're in University City, I would encourage you to find out what, what the, you know, city of University City is charging for residential rental license.
I believe it's their thirty dollar application for the license in U-City.
I, I-
But not the, not per unit.
Yeah. We can give you some information on what are, what the other cities are, are charging for the fees, but, um, again, we, we feel this is a reasonable fee and we haven't been able to increase it because of, because of the restrictions, so we're giving it to the voters and our voters are going to be the ones that, that make the decision.
Yeah, I understand you have the provisions of the Hancock Amendment. I just, um, you know, was hoping to have more input on this issue.
Well, and again, and I, you know, I apologize, we've had a committee that's been working on this for months. We've had work sessions to discuss it and, and the urgency of doing this now is that we have an election in April where we already have something on the ballot. So we can put an additional, in this case, we're going to be asking tonight for two additional items to go on that ballot, um, and it won't cost us any additional amount. So we really don't feel that it would be feasible for us, for our taxpayers, to wait and, and give others more of an opportunity to look at it and put it on a ballot in August, because then it's going to cost us potentially thirty, forty thousand dollars to, to put it on when we already have a, a ballot measure going on in, in, uh, in April. So that's, that's why, uh, it, it, it may appear to you that this has been rushed, but this is something that's been looked at. Actually, Mr. Shildroth and I had a committee, how many years ago, Mr. Shildroth, where we looked at, it's been several years ago, so this has been an ongoing process over a period of several years. And the current committee has been working on it for many months and, um, the holidays came up and, you know, we wanted to get this before the voters while we had the opportunity to do it. So, um, we're going to give it to our voters and the voters are going to be the ones that have to, have to make that decision. So I agree with Mrs. Pagano that four dollars and seven, seventeen cent a month increase, uh, which is what it's going, or no, that's not even the increase, that's going to be the total cost, where it hasn't been increased in, in many, many years. We don't feel that that is too burdensome and it'll be up to a landlord to determine whether they want to pass that cost on to their tenants and, and I wouldn't blame them if they did that, but I don't think that's going to affect, um, affordable housing in the city of Florissant. I think it's actually going to, going to help us because it's going to help us with the administration of it, so, but thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Henke.
Yeah, Mr. Councilman Lee, kind of tried to describe the urgency of it, why we need to get this done tonight. Uh, and it was brought up in session, in the work session, about the, of the amount of the increase, and it is a large increase. But remember, this hasn't been increased in eighteen, nineteen years. Uh, if we're going to put it, we already have something on the ballot, we're going to put this on there. It is a large increase at one time, I agree. But what do we do? A little bit now, then we come back in the ballot again in August, then we come back in the ballot in November? We're trying to play a little catch-up here on this one. And we knew we'd take some, if you just go straight off the numbers, but this is, it's so long overdue, they've skating, skated for so many years at, at such a low rate. The only way to do this is to, to, to do it all or nothing. Go for it, let the voters decide, because I think the voters in Florissant, especially a lot of the homeowners, not just the, the renters or the landlords, but the homeowners, have been subsidizing, uh, my word, uh, some of the rental houses and, and what's going on with that, and I think rental properties, not just houses, but apartments and everything else. It's one of the big issues that we have. Tim Jones alluded to that earlier, of, of some of the iss- issues that are coming forward. Yeah, it's a lot. We're doing it at one time, but we feel this is the best way to approach it. Go for it all at one time, let the voters decide how they want to spend the money.
Thank you, Mr. Henke. Mr. Jones.
Yes, I, just to let you know, I, I, I mentioned it to John, but I didn't go into it deeply, uh, some of the people that I did bounce this off of were four apartment managers. Uh, I didn't know these people, they didn't know me. Uh, I said, "You guys got a couple of minutes for me?" They said, "Sure." They sat down with me. Uh, the first thing they got confused about is when I told them fifteen dollars. They thought that that was fifteen dollars per unit. And I told them, "No, it's fifteen dollars for five hundred units, ten thousand units, it doesn't matter, it's just fifteen dollars." Most of them thought I was kidding with them. They said, "You've got to be kidding me. Florissant is still at fifteen dollars for a whole complex, a whole unit?" And I said, "Yes." And, uh, they said, "Yeah, you guys should move this up sometime back." It didn't happen then, but we're going to try to take it up now and, uh, uh, try to do the right thing. And like I said, uh, I think everybody agreed, we're going to bring it to the voters. Uh, I, I, I'm just, uh, looking, I was, uh, voted into office to look what's best off for my ward that I was voted at, the city as a whole. Uh, I don't think that my taxpayers want to keep eating this stuff. They've ate it long enough. The people responsible for this should take it on their backs a little bit more and, uh, that is how I feel about it. I appreciate you coming up, uh, uh, the more questions, I mean, it, it does get aggravating sometimes, but the more questions we get thrown at us, the more knowledge we get and the more we look into things. So don't think you coming up here, uh, hurts my feelings whatsoever. I mean, I, I, I pick up stuff, you never stop learning in life and, uh, many things that, uh, John's even said over there, I've definitely went home and looked at, uh, uh, I, I am very open and I got big ears and sometimes I do got a big mouth. But, uh, I, I mean, I, I am far pushing the city in the right direction. And I, I wanted to ask you, do you live here in the city of Florissant?
I live in University City. I'm, I'm here on behalf of St. Louis Association of Realtors.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. O'Donnell, floor is yours. As usual, Mr. O'Donnell, if you'd be so kind, Happy New Year, Kevin. If you'd be so happy, glad as to, uh, give us your name and address, we'll let you proceed with your comments.
Happy New Year to you.
Thank you.
You too, Mr. Egan.
Thank you.
Mr. President. Anyway, um, I appreciate Mr. Lee. Thank you very much for replying to my email that I sent. Eight council members didn't even acknowledge my email, nor by phone call or by email or even texting. So anyway, I want to thank you, Mr. Lee. Also, the mayor didn't respond and I addressed it to him also, because this is also his city. And, um, what I was concerned about was, I saw this on Friday about the rentals and I saw the fees and I have no problem with them, not at all. Here's when my problem is, uh, I, maybe my math is wrong, maybe it's common core or something, but I count it three hundred and fifty thousand dollars profit off these, off of these, uh, uh, this increase. Is that correct?
I don't have-
No? I mean, if somebody's saying-
Not profit?
No profit? Okay, thank you, Ms., that, thank, thank you, Mrs. Bon Pagano. I appreciate that. Okay, but I'd like to ask you, since you're so, uh, adamant, you know, about getting this, uh, increase in, because this hasn't gone up since ninety-seven. I appreciate everybody's response to this this evening because it's on videotape, on FCTV and also in the minutes, I hope. Hope it will be. But what happens is, you all said that it hasn't gone up in, since ninety-seven, eighteen years ago, okay? Okay. We've got business licenses that haven't gone up since nineteen sixty-three. That's fifty-three years ago. That seems pretty important to me, pretty damn important to me. Don't you all agree, folks? Anyway, uh, this, this to me is a shame. You raised the fees on the recreation centers, you raised fees on building permits, permits to get to put a pool in or repair, replace a pool. Everybody gets, uh, all the residents get increases, whether it be for a vacant house fee, uh, ordinance fees for a vacant house and the one that's coming up this evening, the two hundred dollar vacant house fee, even if there's nothing wrong with the house, okay? Now, Ms. Pagano says that it costs a hundred dollars per app to process one of these, uh, pardon, one of these, uh, lo- uh, what do you call them? Tenants, okay, the units. Then how much does it cost to process a business license? It's got to be more, it's got to be at least a hundred. And the last I heard, it was only twenty-five. Can somebody explain that to me sometime? I mean, I know this isn't regarding this, but I am going to make this public on Facebook, every place I can find, and let them know just how much they're, they're, they're taking care of businesses and putting it all on, on the residents. And this is the way it's always been, Ms., Mrs. Bon Pagano and, uh, Mr. Egan, it's been like this. I've lived here sixty-one, sixty years. I've lived here longer than probably everybody up here on the dais, except, except for Mr. Henke, because he's as old as I am. But I think he is. But, uh, I've lived here since fifty-five. And I was nine years old when the, when the tax, when the permit, uh, the license fees went up on the businesses. That was fifty-three years ago. I'm retired now. Jeez. If you want to do things, you want to be expedient about something, cover everything. We've got room on the ballot, don't we? Do we not have room on this ballot for this? I guess, I guess I'm just whistling in the wind because I'm not getting any responses, but that's okay, because I understand just how you felt beforehand and I plan to use this video when I-
Ms. Pagano, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. O'Donnell, I, I didn't know that he had me on, because I will respond to you. Our committee, which I guess it was eight months ago, was formed to deal with-
You said six months ago.
Probably when I started, when we talked about forming a committee, so-
Okay. How many of those on the-
Timing may be a little bit off, okay? So we just were strictly, at that time, going for, uh, the rental property, because that seems where all nine of us were having trouble. And let me just go this way, we did bring up the business license, okay? Not really my committee at, at this point. I mean, it, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's, it's not the same. So as soon as this is over, we will be discussing the business license, because it has been brought up. You were not, you were not at the work session, um, that we had over this, but that was part of the discussion-
What, January sixth?
Was the business license.
Well, when was that? Because we don't get notification on, on the internet and I'm not driving down to City Hall every morning or every afternoon before you close to check and see if there's a notice on the board down there, if there's going to be a, a, a discussion or a, or a work session. I think that should be put on the internet, on the Facebook, on your, your work, your webs, your webpage, that we're paying over thirty thou- thirty-six thousand dollars for. I think that we should, we should, the residents deserve to know this.
Okay.
We need to know when the work sessions are, so we can come.
I don't disagree with you.
Last Thursday, I didn't make it.
Hold on, Kevin. Mr. Schmidt. You, you saw the floor, Ms. Pagano? Okay, go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry. We're sort of getting a, a little off base.
We are way off base.
And when you are, um, asking that it's going to cost the resident or homeowner, I'm assuming you, you're, you're not a landlord, right?
No.
Okay, so it's not going to cost you-
I may not be a homeowner after this.
You're a homeowner, right. This will not cost you anything. So in order to put it on social media and things, this will not cost-
I'll still be paying for everybody else.
Me anything, because I'm not a, a landlord.
No, but-
All right, Kevin, do you have any other comments about this ordinance, not about the business license, which is not-
Well, January sixth, just last Thursday, there was a work session for this, correct?
That is true.
Where was it posted?
It was posted in accordance to law.
It was posted in City Hall. Okay, so I'm supposed to drive down here every day at five o'clock or five minutes to five and check to see if it's been posted down here on the, on the doorway?
You're certainly free to do that, Kevin.
I'm not free to do it, I have to do it if that's, if that's what you require. You can't even, you don't even have the courtesy to post it on the website because you're afraid people will show up. And I couldn't show up because I've been sick.
Mr. Schmidt, do you have a comment? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all I have, because, uh, I just don't understand, we've got twenty, twenty, uh, apartment units and all of a sudden, like I said, I, I believe that they should go up, but I also believe that other things should go up also, not just trying to slam the residents with, uh, higher fees for everything else.
I appreciate your comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there anyone else in the studio, on your studio audience? I got that in my brain. Any audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council for final vote.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Cyan?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Bill ninety-one thirty-five, correction, ninety-one thirty, thirty-five passes and becomes ordinance eighty-one ninety-four, eight-one-nine-four. Bill ninety-one thirty-six.
An ordinance of the city of Florissant, Missouri, calling for an election to authorize the city to impose an annual registration fee of two hundred dollars, which shall be charged to the owner of property improved by residential structure, including a structure containing multiple dwelling units, which has been vacant for more than six, for six months or more.
Mr. Schmidt makes a motion for a second reading. That is seconded by myself. All in favor of a second reading? Aye. Opposed? Please read the bill a second time.
An ordinance of the city of Florissant, Missouri, calling for an election to authorize the city to impose an annual registration fee of two hundred dollars, which shall be charged to the owner of property improved by residential structure, including a structure containing multiple dwelling units, which has been vacant for six months or more.
Mr. Kaputa makes a motion for a third reading. That is seconded by Mr. Lee. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote on a third reading, please.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Please read the bill a third time.
An ordinance of the city of Florissant, Missouri, calling for an election to authorize the city to impose an annual registration fee of two hundred dollars, which shall be charged to the owner of property improved by residential structure, including a structure containing multiple dwelling units, which has been vacant for six months or more.
Before a final vote is taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Yes, ma'am, you're more than welcome to proceed up here. Again, your name and address for the record, please.
Martina Johnson, seven three three four Pershing Avenue, University City.
Thank you.
I just want to go on record again, saying that our association has concerns about, you know, this bill too. I also more so had questions, if I may ask my questions.
You can, you can ask a question at the council, which is respond, they can, they're not obligated?
Well, I just wanted to confirm, the main change to this, based off the ordinance you already have, is changing it from semi-annual to an annual fee.
This is an addition to what we currently have on our, on our, on the books regarding vacant rental properties, or vacant properties.
It's an additional two hundred dollar annual fee, in addition to the two hundred dollar semi-annual fee?
This would involve residences that are not, that are in code, that are, that are code compliant.
Okay, so that's the change, is that the, whether or not they are uncompliant with the current housing maintenance codes?
The current ordinance addresses vacant properties that are not compliant.
That was my next question.
This would, this would address all properties in the city.
Okay, and then is this the chronic scheme, chronic vacancy scheme, is this also new? This additional a hundred dollars after three years, an additional two hundred after four years, an additional five hundred after five years?
Mr. Lee?
I think to answer your question, going back to your original question, is that when, when a house becomes vacant, we have no way of knowing that it's vacant. So we're asking that, under this ordinance, that a homeowner or a property owner, whoever, would have to report that vacancy to us, so that we know that it's vacant. I'm sure you're familiar with the problems vacant houses have with stripped copper and burglaries and crack houses moving in and things like that, not that we have that in our city, but this allows us to know that we have a vacant house, it puts it on a registry. It's not a moneymaker for us, because we're gonna have the police in that sector watching that house closer, we're gonna have to be aware that it's vacant and that it's going to be there. So it's a semi, it's a, it's an annual registration fee, so that we know the property is vacant. If the property is vacant for less than thirty days, like in a transition on a sale, there's no, there's no fee to that at all. And then if, if a vacant house then comes out of code compliance, that's our existing ordinance that the voters voted on, you know, many years ago. This is, again, something we're going to the voters with to ask them, because we want to be able to know when a property is vacant, because it is costing the city and our current residents a lot of money to watch out for vacant properties. And, and the damage to a owner, if a vacant property is stripped of copper, you're talking thousands of dollars of damage. So it's just a way for us to know that the property is vacant and that it's, and that we have it on our registration, so.
Yeah, I'm well aware, you know, the problems that vacant properties cause, and I understand your, you know, desire to have that monitored. I had another question, because it was, you know, unclear based off the original bill and the new proposed bill, is, does this apply to property or to unit? Because the other bill applied per unit, and if this does as well, that would cause kind of problems with multiple family units in one property.
Do you want to get it, Joe?
Just another question?
It's not, if you have an apartment complex, it doesn't apply. These are single-family residential units.
Mr. Henke.
Yes, also, the program guidelines for this particular bill will come up in front of the people at a council meeting if, if and when it is approved by the voters. So the program guidelines will still be discussed in front of-
The regulations?
Right, right.
Thank you, Mr. Henke. Is there anyone else who'd like to make comment on this bill before a final vote is taken? Thank you. Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Sayam? Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Bill ninety-one thirty-six passes and becomes ordinance eighty-one ninety-five, eight-one-nine-five. Bill ninety-one thirty-seven.
Ordinance authorizing the acceptance, the acceptance of ownership assignment of real estate properties held by the St. Louis County Collector of Revenue through the Collector's deed.
Bill ninety-one thirty-eight.
Ordinance authorizing acceptance, acceptance of ownership assignment of real estate properties held by St. Louis County Trustee through the Collector's deed.
Council announcements, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. First of all, I'd like to recognize that January ninth was National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. This is our first meeting back after the first of the year, so I want to, on behalf of myself, and I'm sure the entire council, let the Florissant Police Department and all law enforcement agencies know that we do appreciate their service. I would also like to, on a personal note, wish my wife a happy birthday today, and I won't tell you how old she is, but just appreciate, and I'll be home shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Jones.
Okay, I'd like to bring up Team. If anybody's got a little extra change in their pocket, a couple of extra canned goods, could you please run it up to Team? There's always somebody hungry, morning, noon, or night. Let's not forget about Team. I also would like to announce, Ward Two is having a Neighborhood Watch meeting for the whole ward. That's apartments included, rentals, homeowners, anybody that lives in Ward Two is welcome to come. This is not a ward meeting, I will be there to answer any questions, but this will be on the Neighborhood Watch program. We are trying to pump that back up in the city, to make everybody aware of what's happening in our surroundings, and nobody knows your neighborhood better than you. So we need you involved. It's easy for me to come on your street and think that's a funny car, when you know your neighbors, I don't. So the more people we have participate in this, the more we can get done, because like I said, you guys know your streets and your neighbors, other people don't. So we need some participation, please. That's coming up February fifteenth at the JFK Center. And everybody's welcome to come up. Thanks.
Mr. Shildroth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sure the mayor's gonna touch on this, but I've had phone calls from several residents concerning the recent flooding and the heavy rains we had a couple of weeks ago. To Ward Five residents, if you're having some issues with MSD, would you please give me a call? Three one four eight three nine two nine two seven. Or give me, you can email me at wardfive@florissentmizory.com. I'd be happy to help you through the sometimes tricky road of working with MSD and some of the other problems associated with this. The city engineer has been really great with us, and city staff has also been great. Thank you.
Mr. Kaputa.
Thank you, Mr. President. Oh yes, I'd like to reiterate what Mr. Jones said about the Neighborhood Watch program. If you need to get involved with your neighborhood, contact your councilman, and they will, they will steer you in the right direction and get a hold of the neighborhood, become a Neighborhood Watch member. It is very important. It helps the police a lot. I mean, the police can't be everywhere, but the neighbors, Neighborhood Watch, the ears and the eyes are around there. So, make sure if you're interested in the Neighborhood Watch program, go ahead and join up. Very good program that we have in the city. And also, I had some good news, I'd like to congratulate my daughter. She's pregnant.
Yay.
Gonna be my first grandchild.
Great news.
She told us Christmas Day, so it was a pretty good Christmas present that we had for my daughter. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Kaputa. Mr. Henke.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. We are all elected officials for our respective wards, one through nine. I'm the representative for Ward Six. While I appreciate the emails or the letters from citizens, no matter what ward they're in, I feel it's my responsibility for the members of Ward Six. I'm not gonna answer somebody else's, a citizen of another ward, no more than I would answer a problem with a street or something. I'm not gonna go to Timmy's ward and tell somebody you ought to do this, or Jackie's ward and think you ought to do this. I welcome the input, but I mean no disrespect. I'm not stepping on any other council member's toes. If you live in a person's ward, that is your elected representative. If you live in Jackie's ward, she is. If you live in mine, I am. I'm not gonna step on any other council member's toes by giving my opinion of some, well, something else that's going in another ward. I just felt like I needed to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Henke. Mr. Lee?
Thank you. I just want to clarify, ma'am, I misspoke on the multiple units. A multiple rental unit that is vacant for more than six months would be subject to the registration fees, so it would include multiple units. I aired in saying that, I just wanted to go on the record for that, to make sure.
You know, this is-
I, I would probably defer to the city attorney and maybe ask for a legal opinion on that. If, if a four family, if one of them is vacant for more than six months, if there's four rental units within a building?
Based upon the proposed legislation, as I understand it, the property would have to be completely vacant, so you would not have just one unit, it would have to be the entire building or structure. It has to be unoccupied or devoid of content.
And I guess that was my confusion as well, so if you have a four family and one of them's vacant, it's, it's not subject to the registration, as long as the, as long as the structure is occupied.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. You have any other comments?
Thanks.
And for me, I'd like to say something positive, and it stopped raining. Didn't know if it would. Mr., Your Honor, Mary Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate you mentioning the passing of former Ferguson Mayor, current Councilman Brian Fletcher. He, he really was Mr. Ferguson, and he was probably gonna get all due honors to his station by the different police departments in the area. But I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for another individual that passed away right before New Year's. Many of you would recognize him if you didn't know him personally, Don LaFerry. He was a fixture at the senior events, he was on the senior commission. He was appointed by Mayor Egan in the nineteen nineties, and he's served ever since on the senior commission. I'd like to ask you for a moment of silence for Don. Thank you, and that, we did, despite not having Don with us, he was with us in spirit on New Year's Eve, and as were most of the city council members, we had a great time. It was documented by the Independent News. I was the only one that didn't wear one of those funny hats. But the council members and our seniors, we all mingled and had a great time on New Year's Eve countdown to noon, as was recognized by Jay Leno several years ago. It's the best New Year's Eve party in the St. Louis area, I think. Mr. Shildroth mentioned the flood relief. We do have a city engineer, Tim Barrett, we have a very good relationship with MSD. If you do have problems, you either call your council member or call our city engineer, Mr. Barrett. But we also have, we're participating in the state of Missouri's debris removal program. Information on that is on our website. The National Guard is going to be removing debris. We don't have the schedule as yet, but it should be in the next couple of weeks, and we'll make sure that all the debris that gets output out by the curb as a result of the flooding will be, will be taken away. Also, the American Red Cross is set up Disaster Relief, a multi-agency resource center, and information can be obtained by calling the Red Cross at five one six twenty-seven hundred, or the United Way at two one one. If you have live Christmas trees to dispose of, you just take them out to the curb on the same day that you would, that the leaf and recycling pickup comes. And I'm ready, and we'll do that free of charge. And lastly, on Saturday, the Boy Scouts, the North Star District, will be hosting a three-week swimming skill center on Sundays at Egan Center, and there the young, youngsters will be learning a variety of skills, ranging from learning to swim to completing their swimming and lifes, lifesaving merit badges. There's over a hundred youngsters enrolled in that, so glad to be hosting them. Always glad to host the Scouts.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next meeting of the Florissant City Council will be January the twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen, at seven thirty P.M. Ms. Pagano moves to adjourn. That is seconded by Mr. Lee. Any discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the council shall stand adjourned.